Good evening. Welcome to the February 12th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the five, I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to the roll call members. I'm Kirk, fill the roll, please.
Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Sandra J. Sonowski. Absent this evening. Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Robert Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have a few minutes.
Eleven thirty.
Okay.
Eleven twenty.
All right, so we have four sets of minutes tonight. Eleven thirteen, eleven twenty-seven, twelve eleven, and twelve twenty-seven. Are there any changes to those minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes for eleven thirteen, eleven twenty-seven, twelve eleven, and twelve twenty-seven.
Okay, motion approves, our second.
Second.
Second from John, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved, all right. On to old business, there's nothing on my agenda, anything from the council? New business then, first item up is Resolution 2024-06, SERTA, which is the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority Membership. This one is mine, I want to apologize to the city council for the members that were here in the last year, if you remember, we had a resolution where we adopted joining this, essentially a group of municipalities and communities around central Indiana to come together to apply for ready grant funding, which is money through the state. There was a miscommunication between me and the SERTA staff essentially of what we needed to do to say we wanted to join. I understood it as we need to pass a resolution, and then they would adopt it at their board, and then we would be in essentially. But apparently this was laid out in state statute, so not an attorney, didn't read the state statute, and there actually is a required resolution and also ordinance, so you'll see that. I will say, before we talk about this discussion, they do have a board meeting coming up here on February fourteenth, so we can talk about it when it comes to time of the ordinance, but I was hoping we could, again, since we voted on this once, already voted to join unanimously, I was hoping the council will be willing to consider suspending the rules and moving to second reading tonight, so we can get this and tell them tomorrow, hey, we adopted it, it's official, and then they could then officially accept us as members on their fourteenth, meeting on the fourteenth, so. But with that, happy to answer any questions, again, there's no financial commitment that requires this from the city, essentially this is a, there was a five-year commitment, I believe, that we'd be part of the membership, so the same things that were laid out in that previous resolution still apply, it's just now in the form of a resolution, and Rob will read it too, but again, this is more just a structure for us to access the state ready grant funds, because you have to be in a group in order to apply for these regional type of grant funding.
Could you remind us what we, what we can use the funds from the ready grant program for?
Yeah, so the, it's kind of dependent upon what SERTA is kind of developing as kind of some of their strategies and their themes, but essentially ready is a very much a flexible grant, and so there is a process that goes through where, again, we'll be in a group of about twenty-five or so other communities, so we're all kind of, we'll all put forward different projects that we want to accomplish in our community, this could be anything from a, I'm throwing this out, parking garage to trail construction, right, usually kind of focused around quality of life, quality of place, could be used for development, things like that, so just pretty wide gambit of projects.
But we used some of that money today for?
For ready, round one, we received a $750,000 grant for Stony Your Bike Park to build the mountain bike park, because our previous group, the 180 Alliance, which is kind of the community's on kind of the west central, or west side of Indianapolis, was very focused around parks, and that was kind of a big initiative and a key pillar of their plan essentially. So, but all this is in the vein of trying to develop collaboration and regionalism, so things that, you know, benefit, you know, regional efforts is kind of a way to kind of scores, and I will say, today, we don't necessarily have any direct kind of ideas what exactly we'll submit, but, you know, those are discussions we're kind of having ongoing with staff currently to say, you know, what projects if we could submit forward, you know, maybe it's something like the Midland Trail, which would connect us to Westfield, maybe some things like that, but, you know, nothing specific today yet for projects to be forward.
Thank you. Mayor, council, if I could just add, I had an opportunity to speak to the executive director, Jennifer Messer, Friday, and asked her that particular question, one of the things she said is what they're trying to do is tap in to the federal monies that have been appropriated for public infrastructure, so that could be a big, big focus to help all the kind of central Indiana communities to be able to get additional dollars that would be there, and it's in the tune of like $500 million that they're hoping to get, so.
Do you happen to know if, I haven't looked into it deeply, do you happen to know if this is like a, a first group, or I'm just picturing the central Indiana, they're looking at Indianapolis and the Donut Counties, and everybody getting involved in one big group, this seems to be the first small group together, like from Fishers to here.
Yeah.
Is there any idea that we're going to add members, future maybe, or not a group?
We actually are one of the later members to be joining, so certainly it's most communities in Hampton County, but then also Avon, Danville, Greenwood is in this as well, Indianapolis is in it, Anderson, so it's, it actually is a much larger group than the last group we were in, which was kind of the, which the state wanted the central Indiana kind of being more in one region versus kind of broke it up into three or four like it was last time, so some of this is coming from the state to say, hey, you guys, you guys are all central Indiana, you guys really should just be in one larger group to try to solve these types of things, so.
I'm just curious.
But, yeah, no, it's, it's actually, most of the communities around central Indiana are already in it, so we're one of the few that aren't yet.
Okay.
Not in Zionsville, Whiteman, for instance, they are already in SERTA, so we're kind of the last major community in Boone County that's not in this one. Rob, you want to read it?
Yeah, mayor, if I may, I think the ordinance would be, we probably should do it first, because that would be authorization to join, and then the plan would, the adoption of the plan is in the resolution.
Okay, so let's do the, so ordinance 2024-03 then? Yep.
Thank you, mayor, council, this ordinance is again, ordinance for the city of Lebanon to become a member of the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority under Indiana Code. The Development Authority is a separate body corporate that shall carry out the purposes set forth in the Indiana statute, which again, acquires, constructs, equips, owns, and financing projects and facilities to or for the benefit of the members of the Development Authority, and it works on funding and developing, whether it's airport authority projects, commuter transportation district, and other rail projects, regional transportation authority projects, and other regional trail or greenway projects. The Development Authority has the power to do, among other things, to finance, improve, construct, renovate, purchase, acquire, equip land, or additional improvements for projects that are owned by the Development Authority, acquire land or more projects from an eligible political subdivision, provide funding for transportation projects or regional trails or other economic development projects. The Development Authority may be established by one or more counties, or one or more adjacent counties, or one or more municipalities and adjacent counties. The Development Authority shall be governed by a strategy committee, which composition and structure will be established by a preliminary development plan, again, which you've received, and that will be adopted by a separate resolution. This council for the city of Lebanon now desires the city to become a member of the Development Authority. This council authorizes the city to become a member of the Development Authority pursuant to Indiana Code. This council shall adopt the plan by a separate resolution, which shall be substantially similar to the resolutions of other participating members of the Development Authority. This, the city shall notify the Indiana Economic Development Commission of its membership in the Development Authority, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, Rob. Any public comment concerning ordinance 2024-03? No, this is just to be for this topic, about the SERTA membership at this time. Sign off. Any further discussion from council, questions?
No, sir.
Okay, would entertain a motion to suspend the rules, so we can, and this again has to be, vote has to be unanimous, so we can move this to second reading, so is there a motion to suspend the rules?
I make a motion, we suspend the rules.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Rob, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rules are currently suspended, we will move ordinance 2024-03 to second reading. Further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Would entertain a motion concerning its adoption?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2024-03.
Make a motion to approve on second reading, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Rob, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? That is adopted, thank you, council, all right, and we'll do Resolution, actually, so now we'll return to regular order, and we'll now hear Resolution 2024-06, this is the SERTA membership plan.
Thank you, mayor, council, Resolution 2024-06 is a resolution of this council adopting the preliminary strategic economic development plan for the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority under Indiana Code. Was on this evening, February 12th, 2024, this council for the city of Lebanon adopted ordinance 2024-03, authorizing the city to become a member of the Development Authority. In order to establish the Development Authority, the fiscal bodies of a combination of any two or more qualified counties or municipalities must adopt a preliminary strategic economic development plan by substantially similar resolution. The plan must include provisions and general information concerning the participating members of the Development Authority, the membership of the strategy committee, the timeline for submitting the comprehensive development plan as defined by the act, and the strategy for attracting investments, grants, matching funds, or local tax revenue. Therefore, be it resolved that the council approves the plan that's attached and described in Exhibit A, in which you've been, received a copy, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect after its adoption in accordance with Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Any council discussion concerning this resolution?
Question?
Yeah, John?
Misspelled word on, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down on matching funds, F-U-D-S on mine.
Got it.
Yeah. Correct that, thank you, sir. Any public comment concerning this resolution? Second Senator Scrivener's here? Yeah, okay, so we don't need to motion amend then, okay, unless there's a further discussion from council, would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2024-06.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution number 2024-06.
Motion approves, there's a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? That is approved, thank you, council, and again, I apologize, we're doing this twice, again, should not make assumptions in the future, so apologize for that. All right, next item will be Resolution 2024-05, city of Lebanon to transfer real property to the Community Development Corporation, Kevin.
Thank you very much, normally Ben would be covering these items, but he's on vacation, so you get to hear from me a little more this evening, but this is fairly straightforward, this resolution is to transfer property from the city of Lebanon to the Lebanon Community Development Corporation. This is a three-acre parcel that, to be honest, until a couple years-
We didn't realize we had.
We didn't realize we owned, yeah. Possibly previous administrations may be able to shed some light on it, but this current administration has no idea when or how we took title to this piece of property. It's a three-acre parcel just west of where we're building the Shell Building Project, in fact, it's part of the Shell Building Project site, this is just west of what used to be KFC, or is now Beefaroo, so again, this is just to, to transfer this piece of property from the city of Lebanon to the city's Community Development Corporation, so that it can be included in the Shell Building Project that is already ongoing, and, and, oh, that's, that's really all there is to it, just to include this project in that Shell Building Project.
Yeah, essentially too, as part of the plan today, essentially this acreage would be covered as part of a detention pond?
Yeah, some detention area, possibly building expansion, really, there's, there's an idea that if the building, if the Shell Building potential owner, and we're nearing that, that, that agreement to close on that property, would want to expand that building, and they've expressed interest in already wanting to expand it before it's completed, that they would need a place to move their, their detention facilities, and so this three-acre piece, again, that we really didn't know we had, would give them the ability to, to do that. So again, because all the contracts agreements that are put together for the Shell Building Project ran through the Community Development Corporation, it's appropriate that the city of Lebanon transfer this real property to the Community Development Corporation, so that it can be included in the overall project.
Any questions on that from Kevin?
No, sir.
Straightforward, yeah. I will say too, we are having very good discussions with a potential tenant purchaser of the Shell Building, so very exciting that kind of the, the city's plan to do the legwork and get that building kind of started has made that a very attractive site for some potentially great, great jobs for Lebanon, so I appreciate the council's partnership in that process through that, so. With that, so we have a resolution, so Rob, can you read the resolution, please?
Thank you, mayor, council, Resolution 2024-05 is a resolution of this council transferring certain real estate to the Lebanon Community Development Corporation. Whereas the city of Lebanon owns a real property that's described in Exhibit A that Kevin just discussed, it's anticipated that an economic development project consisting of an approximately 90,000 square foot office and manufacturing facility, and the installation of associated manufacturing equipment will be constructed on the real estate. In order to facilitate the construction of the project and to promote economic development within the city, the city desires to transfer the real estate to the Lebanon Community Development Corporation. Therefore, be it resolved, the city agrees to transfer the real estate to the Community Development Corporation for nominal consideration to facilitate the construction of the project and promote economic development within the city. Upon adoption of this resolution, that the mayor and clerk treasurer authorize to execute and deliver any agreement or instrument, including the form of the quitclaim deed that's attached here as Exhibit B, and to take any other actions that are necessary to carry out this resolution, this resolution shall be in full force and effect after its adoption.
Thank you, Rob. Other questions, comments from council? You have a comment concerning Resolution 2024-05? Okay, with that, would entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept Resolution number 2024-05.
We have motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Rob, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? That is approved, thank you, council. Okay, so the next couple items here, these are, I guess Ben's request, but they're all essentially coming from, the funding requests from the non-reverting line, I guess, Todd, you had some discussions with Baker Tilly that we needed to kind of maybe go, go through this process more instead of, yeah.
Right, this, we've had non-reverting lines, and normally, we just transfer to the next for each department, well, this is now budgeted, just like our regular budget, so the planning department has received money from permits, fees, et cetera, and they now want to spend that, and so Baker Tilly is telling us that in order for them to spend that, that they have to have your permission.
It's a little different process in the past, whereas, you know, we, essentially there's an approved amount of money, and then departments would have that authority to do it, but because it's out of a non-reverting line, it's, I guess, similar operating to the way Food and Beverage does?
Right.
Where we kind of approve the requests out of the Food and Beverage on a, on an individual basis, but also we need to, going forward, need to budget it as well, too, so.
The other thing, this will be included, we do budget for 2025, all of the non-reverting lines, we will see and prove in budget next year, what issue?
For next year. Schedule another day.
Yeah.
I think if we approve the budget for the specific uses, we can do that, but-
Ben has-
Yeah, there, there was an appropriation from the non-reverting line into the 2024 budget for, I believe, $300,000. So, you're exactly right, this is a fund that collects, essentially this is, money collected from developers and builders associated with building permits and development plan applications, plan commission applications, that goes into this non-reverting fund, that we had envisioned using it for community development projects, different miscellaneous things to, to improve the community with those monies. So, there's already $300,000 allocated into the 2024 budget, and what we're finding out now is that is the recommendation that we come back to you with specific items that we're going to spend on. For 2025, when we go through the 2024 budget cycle, we will have a list of things that we will put in there, maybe projects like this, maybe it will be some general things, like we have the Habitat for Humanity Elevate Lebanon Program that we're funding through this program to, to help, help individuals that need help to make improvements on their homes, so that is something that would be aligned, budgeted, next year for the non-reverting fund, so that we can partner with Habitat for Humanity and others on doing those, not just project builds, but they also have a rehab program as well that we will help to fund.
So I think it'd be like, like in the Food and Beverage Fund where we, the year we built the trail out of Food and Beverage, we actually put, you know, trail construction as, as one of our budget lines under the overall budget, they can spend that money, but if it's just a general overall appropriation, they'd have to come and request it, if that makes sense, yeah.
So, it really-
Yeah, so go ahead and start with the, so the first item-
Yeah, the, the format of the agenda was, was a little off, so D, E, and F are listed on there, really, E and F should be sub-items to item D.
Yeah.
So, both of these items that will be before you are for the use of funding from that Planning and Zoning Non-Reverting Fund. At a high level, there's two things on there, there is the Comprehensive Plan Update, which the agenda did have a typo in it, it's 99,500, it's listed as 99,000, not sure what that is, but it's 99,500, and that's for a citywide comprehensive plan update, and then the second item that is before you, and we can talk more about these or take them however order you want to take them, would be the ULI Technical Assistance Panel Program for $15,000.
Let's do the Comprehensive Plan Update first, discuss that, vote on that, and then we'll assume we've got visitors that want to talk about the ULI item, so let's do the Comprehensive Plan.
Absolutely. So, we are required by state statute to keep and maintain a comprehensive plan, and so that's what this is about. We are recommending that we allocate these monies, $99,500, to engage in a contract with MKSK, which is the design consultant, to update our current comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan was updated, I believe, about five years ago, which normally you would wait a little longer, but as most of you know, as everyone probably knows, there's been a lot changing around Lebanon, we didn't envision the Leap District, didn't envision the things that will come with that, and so it's a good time that we step back and take a look at this, because our comprehensive plan is one of those items, as we're making zoning level decisions, as we're making rezone decisions, annexations, we need to, we need to consult what our comprehensive plan is recommending, it's a recommendation document that we use in the planning department. So, the comprehensive plan is citywide, so this update will, will look at the entire city's land use plan and take into account things like the Leap District. MKSK is the firm that also did the Leap District PUD ordinance, and, and so we would be incorporating things that were in that into this comprehensive plan update. So again, it's comprehensive plan update, it's something that is citywide, it is comprehensive planning for the entire city that lays out visions and directions for the future and the growth of the city.
Any questions on that from council, for Kevin?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning the comprehensive plan? With that, unless, and again, we already have $300,000 budgeted in the non-reverting, so essentially it's allocating about a third of that to do this update, which is a fairly, probably several month-long process to-
Yeah, I mean, these comprehensive plans generally take a year, I, I think we're more looking at what updates we need to make, and not necessarily an overhaul of the entire comprehensive plan, but yeah, these, these studies generally take 12 to sometimes 18 months to perform, so.
So with that then, assume it's a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Funding Request, essentially? So with that, would entertain a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Update Funding Request?
I make a motion, we approve the Comprehensive Plan Update Request from the Planning and the Zoning Non-Reverting Fund, correct?
Yep, we have a motion, is there a second? Second from Sierra, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? That is approved. All right, next item will be similar vein, this will be for the ULI Technical Assistance Panel Program, Kevin?
Kevin, would you, for those watching, explain what ULI is?
Absolutely, the first thing I was going to say, ULI is the Urban Land Institute, and the Urban Land Institute is really a professional organization that has, has members that range from city planners, city engineers, consultants, infrastructure consultants, planning consultants, development professionals, real estate professionals, real estate law professionals, really covers the gamut of anything that is urban land, so anything that is developed land, so that is, that is what the ULI stands for, and that's what the ULI advocates for, and what this is, is a program that they have, which is called a Technical Assistance Panel Program, which is a, which is a program where they would send to Lebanon a group, a panel of, of real estate professionals, and they will help you look at an area of your city and determine what may be feasible there, what may be needed there, what kind of investments the city needs to make in infrastructure, in roads, in parks, in trails, in housing investments, what kind of programs that the city could partner with, with developers on, or partner with citizens on to improve the quality of life, whether that is, like I said, better, better, better parks, better streets, better utilities, better lighting, better street trees, all of those things that you could, you could put into a plan to help, help an area of the city, it also includes strategies for how you might develop, specifically on this, this has been a goal of the city, is how do we, as we're growing, how do we make sure that Lebanon is not just growing for the people that can afford, you know, what is the average or above average house right now, excuse me, house right now in the Indianapolis area market, which is over $400,000. That is not something we want to do, we want to maintain the culture that we have in Lebanon, we want to maintain the people, the citizens, we want to maintain Lebanon for our neighbors, so how do we make sure we're creating opportunities for those what we call attainable housing product types, whatever those may be, there's a lot of new different housing product types that we're talking about, that are also thought about in our, in our current UDO update, that is working through the process with you guys, whether those be accessory dwellings, things like granny flats over garages, tiny houses, cottage homes, things like that, the, the non-traditional housing types that can get us to a much lower housing, housing cost, where everyone has a place to live, everyone can afford it, and we can, we can grow Lebanon in a way that maintains the culture and the, and the citizenry that we already have here. So this is a program where the ULI would send a panel of those experts to us to look at an area, look at the needs of that area, and begin to make suggestions as to what Lebanon can do to help that area, so that's, that's really what this program is all, is all about. What can I, what questions could I answer, or what, is there anything that you would like to add?
Anything on just the general, I can kind of touch on maybe the background of the area we're talking about, and, and how that kind of developed, but is there any like general questions about the process of the technical assistance program? I think it's important to clarify, it's not a development plan, it's not an- I think it's important to clarify, it's not a development plan, it's not an actual, it's not a, essentially, it's a process to work through of potential solutions to a problem we're trying to address. It's not a, there isn't someone coming and trying to buy anything. It's strictly just industry experts that are looking at, try to solve a problem that we say that, hey, we think we can do something better here. And that's what we're.
So it's learn about best practices that have worked other places.
Well, and I'd say it's more than just learning. It's also, it's going through and using, leaning on their expertise to say, how would this function? How would this work? Are there incentives that the city would need to partner on, or are there different financing structures that we could partner with developers on if that's, to accomplish these things, right? It's not just.
There's a lot of tools that this panel of experts can bring to us. You know, I've mentioned things like, you know, infrastructure and parks and lighting and street trees and things like that. But also could be, how do we get a neighborhood serving market into an area that would be, you know, not a large sale grocery store, but a small-scale retail opportunity that would serve the people that are living in the adjacent areas? It would look at owner-occupied rehab programs, things like that, that could also be built into a plan. So not unlike the comprehensive plan that looks at the city on a macro level, this is just the other end of that where we're focusing in on a specific area. And specifically, to talk a little bit more about the area and why, we're talking about the area around the IMI plant. The area west of there that's owned by the.
User.
Sorry, the construction company. And then slightly to the north, there's some parcels owned by Gilman's. And then you've got the trailer court to the south, south of Elm Drive there. And it's looking at all that area. One of the reasons why we're focusing on that area is we've been informed that IMI is looking to vacate that site. And the construction company, came to me now, Masterbuilt Construction, is also looking to eventually vacate that site. That's a generational business that is probably nearing the end of its life cycle here. So we're looking at a significant piece of property really close to our downtown that may become vacant in the near future. And we want to understand what can we do so that that doesn't turn into an eyesore? How can we help that area? How can we develop programs and plans, put those in place so that we can incentivize the right type of opportunities and growth in that area?
Makes sense?
I have a question for you. Has this been something that's been brought up, say IMI has said, hey, you've got 30 days to tell me what you're going to improve here? I mean, I know it's not going to be that quick, but.
Yeah. There's not been a timeline given to us by IMI, but there have been conversations where they've said, we need to move that facility. That facility is no longer, we can't grow that facility. It doesn't serve our needs. It doesn't serve the needs of a growing Lebanon and growing Boone County. And we need to find another location where we can better meet those needs. There's not been a timeline. It's probably on the shorter term rather than long term. And again, this is just a planning study to look at, what do we do? What programs and plans do we put in place so that we can adapt to those changes as they come forth? But no, there's not been a, hey, at the end of the year, we're shuttering that facility. We don't know. Could it happen that fast? Possibly. Could it be five more years? We don't know. Again, this is just a planning study that would be something that we could put into our toolbox and help that area as change inevitably happens there.
Essentially, instead of going vacant, right, and then us trying to figure out what do we need to do, we kind of have done a lot of the legwork that when those opportunities present themselves, we can kind of pull it off the shelf and say, hey, we've kind of, we've been through this process, we've engaged with the neighbors, we've talked about, you know, what makes sense there, what the goals are, what are we trying to address? And it kind of is a lot of that initial, you know, sometimes, you know, trying to figure out what the vision is for a community, right, or vision for a neighborhood is, right? So we've kind of done that legwork so that when the opportunity presents itself, it's kind of ready to go.
Right. Because what may happen when developments like an IMI facility near the end of its life, they'll move. You know, IMI is a big company, and they're selling a lot of concrete in Boone County right now. So they will move when they need to move what's right for them in the market. What we don't want is that site to go vacant, themselves at a reduced price to somebody who has grand visions, and us not be able to say, no, wait a minute, here's what we want to have happen there. And here are the steps that we're putting in place here, the plans we're putting in place here, and the incentives that we'll put in place so that we can see that area, as that site goes vacant, turn around in the right way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Have we said IMI, or they should be have to clean it up as they leave?
Well, yeah.
Walk out, they're gonna have to clean it up.
Yeah, there's definitely responsibilities that they will have there. And we haven't got into the weeds and the details on that, but obviously, operating a concrete plant on a site does certain things to the site, does certain things to the land, and those are things that they're going to be responsible for.
Yes, I'm saying they should be held responsible to fix it so that who comes in can do something with it positively.
Yeah.
Well, and that's also part of what this study would do, is it would kind of identify some of those challenges, right? And, you know, do we need to apply Brownfield grant studies? Should you do phase one, phase two environmental studies on that?
Absolutely. Can we assist with Brownfield programs? Can we assist with infrastructure packages? Can we assist with other programs, proper zoning, proper other incentives that might help to see an area flourish when you would have a large vacancy end up in that area? You know, we've seen other sites around the city go vacant and take years, decades.
Prairie Industries.
Yeah, Prairie Industries, you know, things like that.
Just flicking to that one.
Prairie Industries, how long did Prairie Industries set there vacant and become a real problem site for us, for public safety?
Electrochem.
What was happening there? Yeah, electrochem. I think of a great success story is Shoemates, where Lebanon Gateway Market Place is now. That, we lucked out, and we liked the plan that was proposed there, right? And we worked with that developer to make sure that happened. But we didn't have a vision set forth for the redevelopment of the Shoemate site before they came along. So this is just us getting ahead of the game and making sure that we're, you know, we're putting our plans, our ideals, our vision for that area forward right now. And again, working with real estate professionals, a panel of them, that will be able to tell us, you know, that's a pie in the sky dream, or that's not. You know, be able to tell us what realistically will work in our city, in our market, based on the market forces that we're seeing.
Excuse me. And I'm sure that they engage all of those people that live around that area also.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely. This is just, this is not even step one, right? This is just authorizing the study to happen. Again, just a study, this is just authorizing the study. The study involves focus groups, it involves engaging citizens, it involves a lot of participation in that process. It's not a study that is done in a vacuum. But it is a study where we bring in outside help, real-world help, not just, you know, intellectual planning help. And I am one, but, you know, it brings in those people that are real-world doers, thinkers, and achievers in that Urban Land Institute market.
Kevin, could you highlight the goals of what the study is looking to address? I think we kind of spelled out in the contract.
I think everyone should have received the, should have received a copy of this, but let me see. I apologize. Is there a goals section in here?
Objectives. I think it's page one.
Yeah, I'll just read from here, if you don't mind, if you'll indulge me here, under the overview section. "The purpose of the TAP, the Technical Advisory Panel, is to verify the issues and to answer the following questions. Is it feasible for a mixture of attainable housing, small, potentially single-story, commercial district, and public amenities, i.e. pocket park, with consideration of traffic flow, parking necessities for these sites? If a mixed-use development strategy is achievable, what is the best use slash layout for these parcels? What are the suggested redevelopment phases for this targeted area, knowing that we want to include a mixture of uses? Number two, what type of attainable housing products should we target for this site, knowing that the goal is to encourage and empower residents of the mobile home park to move into a more sustainable option? Number three, what types of incentives should we consider for this multi-site redevelopment project, understanding that we will have different targeted audiences, in parentheses, developers, residents, commercial businesses, et cetera?" I think that's probably covers in a nutshell what we're trying to accomplish.
Are there questions for Kevin at this time? So again, the request is for $15,000 for the non-reverting line to begin this process, to begin the engagement, to begin the discussions about this topic, right? So it's not, again, no other decisions other than that.
This triggers nothing happening but a plan being put in place.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Just a comment. I know that area quite well since I grew up at 609 West Elm Street.
Okay.
Lived there my entire life until I graduated high school. So this plan takes into effect all the houses that are around there, plus the mobile home park?
Yeah.
Down Dick Street and down Coon Street and.
Yeah, essentially, this is from, this is a rectangular area bordered on the east by West Street, bordered on the north by Pearl Street. And then basically, it is from the Elm Street Mobile Home Park, including the Mobile Home Park, north through that master-built construction, Hendricks Excavating, IMI site, and then the houses and the other lots along, running along Pearl Street. Yeah, there was a map, a highlighted study area map in there.
Any other questions for Kevin at this time? Okay. Is there any public comment? Please come, yep, please come forward, station A for the record, and keep comments for three minutes if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look around the council, I kind of know a lot of you, most of, well, all of our lives. The thing that gets me, the first question is, why were we not made aware of this? I didn't know it. I got up Sunday morning to go to work, my neighbor comes across the street, you hear about the meeting Monday night? What meeting? My wife has family in Florida, they knew it before we did. So what happened? That's the question we have. What happened?
Well, I guess I'm, we haven't even started anything yet, right? So I don't, we're not making any decisions other than to say, hey, let's start a process to talk about this. So I don't, I mean.
That's why we're here tonight.
Right. And so I guess I would say, this is the process that we're informing people, hey, we're going to look at this. We're going to talk about this, right? I mean, because, I mean, the council could vote no, and then we don't, and then there's no discussion happening, right? So, I mean, to have a discussion, to have a discussion, I mean, we needed to have a starting point. This is the starting point to say, hey, let's begin this discussion.
Wait to see what happens? My wife and I have been there half our lives. We've been there 39 years. And I spoke to a young couple a while ago, they just paid their home off. And by the way, it's a mobile home park, not a trailer. Another couple, another lady saved several thousand dollars to get into the park, was kicked out of where she lived. She, months and months of saving money. She's been there three months.
But this is not, but this is not proposing anything, again, this is a study. This is not proposing kicking anyone out, right? So that's what I'm saying.
How long would the study take?
Daryl Terrace was a private agreement between the owner and a private company.
Our trailer sells somebody else's property.
Exactly.
If they, if you guys offer them money, they're going to take it and run. And a 75-year-old Vietnamese won't have a home anymore because they're going to, I'm sorry, we're taking the money, get your trailer off my property.
And, yeah, we got to speak, we're at the microphone. So again, we're not offering anyone any money to do anything.
We know this, but it's just a startup.
I just wanted to get an idea of where we might be later. I mean, you know.
I think it could be a safe bet to say that we would like to start a study here and keep everybody informed so that you know what's going on. This isn't something that we want to come out and say, hey, we're going to do this, and then all of a sudden, boom, everything's presented. No, no, that's not what we're doing here. What we're doing is making a study to improve the city of Lebanon. Okay? And then we have, like they said, we have businesses that have a potential of leaving, and we don't want vacant properties. We're going to keep everyone informed of what's going to be taking place.
Are we, or is the council going to keep us informed as things progress? In other words, a month, you know, a month later.
Part of the study includes engagement with the neighborhood, right? So there's a process for that, right? And so there will be a report that will be issued. I think there's a public meeting that they have where they issued the report, and we can all see the conclusions and findings of the working group as they do this process. So we'll all understand kind of what they came up with and what the barriers and challenges are. And again, if part of the challenge may be that the people that live in the mobile home park don't want to move, right? And that's fine, right? I mean, that's part of this process to determine what is going to make sense there, right? And so if that's a factor there, right, if we hear the feedback from that, then that's going to impact what is laid out there in the overall plan for the concrete plan and for the construction company site, right? That's part of that discussion, how do we make this a cohesive neighborhood? That's the whole reason behind the study.
Okay. Well, like I said, I just, you know, I know everybody got worried about now we're all.
Yeah, no, I get it. I mean, I think you guys, I mean, someone posted it all, and they tried to scare you guys of, we're coming in, buying this, kicking you guys out. I get it, right? I understand, like, what the reaction is. I totally understand. But there's a, I mean, we know that there's going to be companies leaving, right? And we don't want it to become a hindrance to you as the neighbors or a larger impact on the city, right? So we want to make sure we have a good idea of, say, when those companies leave, here's what we can do to make our entire community better for everybody. And that's the goal behind this. We're not trying to hurt anybody at this process.
Okay. I'll just get an idea of where we were at.
That's not what the study says, sir.
My name is Joe Flowers. I live in Elm Park. What you guys don't understand is that we do not own the property that our trailers are sitting on. Some of us own our trailers. You've got families back here with three and four children. A pocket community is going to have one- and two-bedroom apartments. You said to make it more sustainable living for the people in the trailer park. Those people with four and five children can't afford a four- and five-bedroom home. They can afford a three-bedroom trailer. I have a three-bedroom, two-bathroom trailer. I work for home, so does my wife. One bedroom is her office, one bedroom is another office. One bedroom is our bedroom. I no longer have children at home. In the last five years, I put in new siding, a new roof, a new furnace, a new air conditioner, a new bathroom. And even the talk about taking our properties away from us, making it pocket communities, getting rid of the trailers, hurts. I don't care if this is just a study. You're talking about spending $15,000 for people to talk about evicting us from our property.
That's not true. That's not what that says, sir. That's not what that says.
It's what it feels like, it's what it feels like to everybody here.
I understand that's why it feels like that, because you were, that's, if, Kevin read the objectives, right?
I know.
Nowhere in that says this is about kicking people out of their houses. That's not what this is about at all in any way.
Then take Elm Park off of it and go to IMI and just redevelop that part and leave us alone.
Let me ask you a question, sir. Do you think that the mobile home park could be improved in any way?
Yes, I do. And you want to know how that, you don't want to know how to do that?
So.
Hold the owners accountable. We pay upwards of $400 a month, some of us more. And those people have not done anything for us. We're paying for our own trailers, we're paying for everything. They won't even put gravel on our parking lots. So if you want it to look better, hold them accountable.
So, sir, that's part of what this will address, right? Again, that's where this engagement will, and those are things that we can.
They are not good people. So you go in there and say, we're all thinking about doing this, we're talking about, you know, setting this up and making pocket communities. Oh, sure, how much you going to owe me for, or pay me for the property? They're going to take that money and run, and then they're going to come to us and say, we're sorry, we sold the property.
The city is not buying anyone's property.
No, 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 no. I didn't say you were. You still think we're doing that.
So, to your point, right, if you agree that your neighborhood could be improved, right? That's the whole point of this study. We are trying to find the ways to make your neighborhood better for you. That is part of the goal. That's, that is part of the goal of the study.
Then don't spend $15,000 on a panel to talk about it. Spend $15,000 and come in there and do it. That's all I got to say.
If you're coming, sir.
He more or less said exactly what I've been doing to my trailer. I've lived here like ten years. It took me that long to pay it off. I've got everything done in there except for the windows that's coming in, the carpet, and a bathroom floor. I had to put a shower in because I couldn't even climb in the tub. But I spent $10,000 on that trailer, and I've got $30,000 tied up in it, all together. I can't move, I can't afford to go nowhere. I'll be 80 next year, or next, next month, not next year, and I can't afford to move. We're worried about our homes. I have two dogs. I have it fenced in. I've been trying to paint and clean up out there, and they're right. They, the city should have said something to them about gravel and stuff like that, because I tried to get IMI to put gravel down in my parking place. They want $200 for that little space I've got. We don't ever get shoveled out. My son comes over and people I know, and takes shovels, and get down my ramp and clean it so I can get in and out. That's not fair to us. All these years, I've lived in Lebanon around, and I know a lot of people, and it's just not fair. It's not fair to nobody, not the young, not the old, not the middle-aged, it's not fair. And they need to take us out of the site. We're trying our best in that trailer park. We're good neighbors, everybody gets along, there's no trouble that I know of, I've never heard any. And you can come by my lot anytime you want to, it's Lot 71. My name's Aileen Stewart.
Thank you, ma'am. For the comment?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make one comment is, without the information that would be gathered with this study, we, the city, would not be able to facilitate more protections for the residents in that neighborhood. My grandmother lived in the mobile home park. When she passed away, my mother moved into her mobile home. So I'm very, very familiar with that. And our goal is to protect everybody's home and property. Now, we are going to do a good job at communicating that, because what happens is, one person gets a whiff of something, and then it runs through like a wildfire. Nobody up here that has a goal in any way of making anybody move out of their home, they don't want to. And without a document like this plan, without that, we have no control over what happens to that property. That owner can sell it to whoever wants, whoever they want to. But with a document and a plan in place, we can control what the new owner can do to a certain extent. So without a plan like this, you guys are going to be in bad trouble.
They could, they could come in with like a really noisy plant where IMI is, you know, and it could, it could be entering for you guys and stuff. And so, we just want to make sure that we're looking ahead, if, to make sure something like that doesn't happen, you know? I mean, I wouldn't want like a steel plant or something, not saying a steel plant would go there, but you know what I mean? Something that's going to be like extremely, extremely disruptive to my daily life, you know? And so, we just have to look at all areas, because, I mean, I wouldn't want that right next to my house. So, we're just trying to get a better idea of how we want that area to look, as far as, do we want businesses there? Do we want, we want more housing? Like, if IMI is leaving, do you want to try to put apartments there? Or a grocery store where IMI is? Or, you know, I just think they want to get a comprehensive idea of what it could be to benefit everybody.
And nobody, no...
You take half the trailers?
We have no control over if, if anybody does want to sell their land, we can't tell, we can't tell somebody, hey, your property, you can't sell it. I mean, I have no control of it, just like, I can't tell them, oh, I want your house, I'm going to need you to go ahead and sell that. I mean, we can't, just like, anybody that owns a property, the city can't come in and be like, hey, we want to take this. Like, we, we, council don't do that. We, we don't force people out. If somebody, if somebody wants to move, they can. I mean, it's not our right to tell people, they can't.
We know all the property.
Right. Right. And so, so if the property owner wants to, there's no talk about selling that property that I have heard. But if any property in town, if that owner wants to sell, we can't tell them, no.
Just like Darryl Terrace.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, they, the owner came to an agreement with Dee Patrick. The city was not involved in any way, but they agree on price, and they sold, and I don't know what happened, right?
So, like, I wanted to finish, my thought here was, without a plan document, the city cannot have input to whoever buys the land. With a document, we can have input. We can bring the full force of the city to help the residents protect their assets.
I mean, would it be valuable to have a grocery store, a barber shop, a, you know, laundromat? I mean, what, I mean, whatever, I mean, those are all discussions that we, that this will kind of flush out of, are there things you guys want to see in your neighborhood that you don't have to get in your car to go get groceries or go do something, right? I mean, who knows, a restaurant, whatever, right? I mean, it's all about trying to, maybe, right? You don't know. I mean, I, but that's what, that's what this process is about, to try to flush those things out of what you guys want in your neighborhood. It's not trying to kick anybody out at all. Good, sir. Sorry.
My name is James. I live in Elm Park as well. And I really think the fear that is going on right now is because of the transparency. And I'm not sure about everybody else, but I didn't find out that the property that I live on was even up for debate to have any work done to it. And I really think that's why everybody's upset, is no one knew that this was going on. No one knew that there was somebody already looking at the trailer park. There, no one knew...
There isn't anyone looking at the trailer park.
This gentleman, it's in his plan.
Just from an area, I'm saying, but there's no, but there's no one to say there's to redevelop, there's no one looking at it.
The process is wonderful, and it works, but we, no one knew until, like, I'll say today, that Elm Park was even looked at as to being tore down. That's what I'm saying, is no one knew that. And that's why everybody's in here freaking out. And the fear of losing their homes is because of the transparency, that no one knew that our property was up for stakes. That's why I think everybody here is upset. There was no transparency, no one knew about this meeting. I found out about it from my son-in-law, who's in Canada, who happened to read it on web and chatter. I knew IMI was possibly leaving, here it comes, but none of this included our trailer park. No one, no one let any of us know that. And I want to say that's where the trust comes from, that's where the transparency comes from. Process is a great idea, I think it worked, there's some things that could be done to the area, but I just think it went about wrong, and I think there should have been a little bit more transparency. Thank you.
Thanks for your thoughts. Good, Keith.
Sir, hey, I want to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
We do not own where you live.
Oh, I know, I know.
And you're, the owner, hey, the owners of that property is the ones that has complete control.
Yes, yes.
They can do, they can drop out and...
We didn't receive a text, we didn't receive any information.
Our knowledge didn't even know.
We, for my understanding, Tammy and Mark didn't even, wasn't even aware that the property was looked at to become better for our area. I just think we should have all known that, hey, this guy right here wants to buy our stuff, what do you guys think about that? I think that should have been like, before the process started, we should have all known that our property was being looked at.
We're not, the city has not tried to buy that property.
I understand that.
We are not trying to do that. It never came up, it's never been talked about.
Well, is this just gentleman wants to take our trailer park, sir?
He's the city engineer. He's the city.
Our trailer park is in his plan.
Yes, he is, he's the, he's got a city logo.
He works for us.
He's a city engineer. He's got a Lebanon logo on his chest, because he's an employee of the city.
He's not, he's not, he's not trying to buy the property, he's not, none of that. Has absolutely nothing. He's trying to make it better for everyone.
Okay. And I understand that, but no one knew that he was trying to improve our property. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I understand that.
We got everybody here from our mobile home park that thinks that this guy is trying to buy our property, because no one knows any different.
I'm telling you, he's not going to buy it, has no intent to buy it.
I understand that.
Now, we can't say somebody that we don't even know may have that intent, but I've never heard of it, and I don't know if the mayor or anybody...
And that's no different than the situation is today.
I still think, my point though, I just was saying that there's a gentleman looking at re-establishing our mobile home park, and none of us was aware of it. That's what my point was.
Because we have not even started the process. Like, tonight?
Right, that was going to happen today that nobody knew about for us to be here. If it wouldn't have been for a Facebook post telling people in Elm Park that this was going down, none of us would be here.
These are all, all these documents were posted online, sir. So like, I...
I tried to answer, and you did not answer me at all, like, you completely ignored me.
Well, my son was in the hospital this weekend, so like, that's part of why I didn't have to answer to every single person. But we, again, this is, this is the beginning of the process, this is not the end. And I think we're, I think a lot of people are jumping to conclusions here.
That's, that's my point.
So there is an engagement process as part of this, right? We don't, like, before we did the downtown plan, right, we didn't send a letter to everyone in town for, hey, we're going to look at the downtown. We started the downtown plan, and that engaged the community. Engagement comes after you begin the process, you have to take the first step. Tonight is the very first step to then begin the engagement. So, and I'm not blaming anyone in this room, I understand why it sounds scary, right? Because when, when things are presented a certain way of like, oh my gosh, this is, this city's going to come in and buy you, I get it, right? But that's not, that is not what's happening here, right? I say that again and again. The city is not trying to buy anyone's property at all, right? We are beginning, we're trying to have a neighborhood discussion of how do we make this neighborhood better? And that's, we want to be partners with you, we want your feedback, and so, we need to have the discussion.
And it works, and your process will work. I was just expressing the transparency of the process. None of us would have known about this.
This was, this was talked about at the Boardworks meeting two weeks ago, it was all posted online. I mean, how do you think the person that posted on social media found it? Right? Because it was, because we posted it all, right? We, we can't, like, if we are forgetting a study process, we don't, there isn't a step where you notify all the neighborhoods around it to say, hey, we're going to start talking about, talking about it, right? We, we're starting the process, and then that's when we will begin the conversation.
My name is Tammy Plochul, I am the owner of Elm Street Mobile Park. So, I will want to just set the record straight, there is nobody that's contacted us about buying our property, we have no plans on selling our property, no matter what comes of the study or anything like that, we will maintain a mobile home park to be able to provide low-income housing for Lebanon, because that's what they need. And we feel, over the 14 years that we have owned this, we have increased the safety of that community probably 300%. We work heavily with the police department, you can speak with them, they don't hardly come to our park anymore. What I guess my question is, as the owner of this property, why are we included in this? I certainly understand IMI, I don't want that to be next to my mobile home park, I want to know, I'd like, I'd like that you guys are going to do this thing.
It's so we could engage the residents that live there to get their feedback of what they want in the larger area.
I understand, but I think we can do that in a different way, just my opinion, I think we can do it differently. I think we need to...
I understand, maybe, maybe there's a misunderstanding of what that yellow line means, and I, fair, that may be a fair point, right? But that's, they were included because we value your opinion, we want to hear what you guys think should be next to you. So we, that's, that's the neighborhood, so we included the whole neighborhood.
I guess to be a community, you know, it's about talking, which, obviously, I understand that's what you're trying to do in this engagement, but instead, you know, you don't include Elm Park, but you contact us as the owners, and say, hey, this is, you know, we're going to be looking to do this, IMI is looking to leave, construction, all of that kind of stuff, we want to make sure that things are good for you guys, next to your community that you guys own, you know, what can you guys do to help us? We're a community partner, we're willing to help. We brought in two brand-new homes last year to our park, we are anticipating bringing in four to six new homes this year, maybe more, based on demand. These homes are $65,000, these are not $5,000 mobile homes. These are brand-new mobile homes that we are upgrading our community, we are going to be doing quite a few things this year within the community to totally upgrade that. I don't think we need a study to be able to do that, I think we need the study outside of our neighborhood, where there are more problems outside of my community that need to be done, because our community is more under control than most of the things around us. And that's not been done, we don't have all of that. So, I mean, I think, I just don't think we should be included in it. I understand IMI and all that, because we don't, you know, as a community business owner, I don't want that property to be vacant either, you know, once they would move out. But I just don't think the mobile home park has to necessarily be involved in that. And I think we would also be able to be a huge partner with the community and the city to be able to do more for that area, and that's something we would be willing to do, to be sure that's a good, safe area and all that.
A comment, ma'am? I'd just like to say, you're talking about you want to participate. Participate in the planning of the area, talk about what you're trying to do with your parcel of land.
Right.
Okay? Make all these people out here happy to live in your community.
Absolutely.
Make all these people out here happy to brag about living in your community.
I agree.
Okay? I've been in, I've been in mobile home parks before, okay? And some of them are good, and some of them are bad.
Absolutely.
And that's all because of the property owner.
Yep.
Okay? If the property owner doesn't take care of the property that's his, because these people are just renting a lot. You know, they deserve a parking spot for their lot. You know, and they need a place to put their car off the street, okay? You have responsibilities to take care of your land.
Absolutely.
Plus, to make it, which I appreciate that you're adding new, new trailers and so forth, which is going to make the place that much better, okay? I've actually driven through Elmwood before, okay, or, I've been through there, okay? And I've been through there in the past, when it was like, you should have just trashed the whole thing and be done with it.
We were told that, we were told that.
Okay? But it's not, it really is not that, as bad as I thought it was.
Absolutely.
The last time I was through there. But it's all you.
I agree.
You've got to be in the process, taking care of, you want to take care of my piece of ground, okay? Because I care about these people.
Right.
Okay? I care about, I'm getting an income, okay? So I'm making a living. But take care of these people too as well. You know, be honest with them, do the things you should do, things like that, but participate in the plan to, I'll say, cover your property. Because the study will come up, and if you're in there, God knows what, we don't know what they're going to come up with, you know, they could come up and say, hey, you know, they're really doing something there. You know, what, what can we do to help them really improve? Well, you're doing it. You know, you're putting new trailers in there. You know, you're putting new trailers in there. Work with these people to find a new trailer or whatever, you know? I know it's expensive. I've been there, done that. But it's like, work with these people to do that. Get involved in the plan and so forth. And, and be right there, because the plan could come up, something here for the IMI site and the construction site could come up. It could be the first spot to start something, okay? And then from there, it may branch out to something else. We don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow. We don't know if it's gonna happen five years or 10 years from now.
I'm just saying, I think it's two different things that you guys are speaking about. And one is businesses that are going out, becoming vacant land, and 80 lots that people are occupying in a mobile home park.
Exactly.
I think those are two different things.
Exactly.
But it's all now grouped into one study, okay?
Well, I'm saying, get involved in the planning part of it and fight for your parcel of land.
Trust me, I, I plan on it.
Okay, that's what I'm telling you.
It's not going anywhere. Trust me. I mean, we do, I mean, we do a lot, you know, we feel. I mean, we're in the mobile home business and have been for 30 years, okay? This is not something that's new to us. Lebanon's just one place that we happen to be. But, you know, we do help our residents do a lot of things. If they need things within their home, you know, we help finance those things, so they can improve their homes and do things like that. We, you know, we try to go, is there things we can improve on? Absolutely. I'm not saying that we're perfect at anything, because we're not. And, you know, but we're trying every year that we've owned it for 14 years. I mean, when we bought it, we were told exactly what you just said. You guys just need to light a match to it and let it go.
Yeah.
I, I mean, that's what I was told. We met with the current mayor at that time. We met with the police chief. They all told us we were crazy. They said, you guys know what you're getting into? And we weeded all that out. We weeded where the police tell me, they don't come to Elm Park anymore. They go to Housher Estates. But they don't come to Elm Park very much anymore.
Well, keep up the good work then.
So, we're working to try to keep that for the community, and that's what I guess, we felt a little blindsided, like, jeez, we've been working. I'm not saying we're perfect. Trust me, I'm not saying that. But we've been working really hard. And it's like, wait a minute here, you know, why aren't we, you know, a little bit of transparency of just saying that this is happening? Give us a call and say, hey, what can we do to help?
We have to- Get involved, fight for these people.
We have to start this process to begin the conversations.
Right.
That's my, that's my point. So, I mean, I, I-
I, I understand what you're saying. I just, I think it's more of a community when you pick up the telephone. Obviously, I'm old school. And, and say, hey, this is what's kind of going on. And I get it, trust me. I mean, we have several hundred residents. I can't always pick up that phone and do that one-on-one kind of thing, so I'm not oblivious to that either. But at the same time, too, we are kind of this mobile home park with 80 lots. We're not a business that's gonna shut down and move somewhere else. That's not, I think we're so different than IMI, the construction company and all that. It is just way different.
But, but it's the whole neighborhood, right? And if there become residents across the street, right, having the neighborhood, right, be cohesive and all work together is gonna be important.
But I don't understand, how can we not be cohesive without being in the study? I think we can still be part of that.
No, I'm, no, I'm saying, we, we want to make sure that it's a, the entire neighborhood is great, right? So we want the, we want the opinions of, of, of the residents in the mobile home park of, of what do they want to see across the street, right? That, that's part of the, so including everything in the neighborhood, that's part of the goal, is to say, what do we, what do we want this to be?
But one of those goals, like Kevin read, was to find a way for the residents to have more attainable housing and basically looking for them to move. So that, that is a huge-
So that's being misunderstood. So the, because, because as your, your, your residents are mentioning, they don't own the ground.
Right.
Right? So, if there's a way to have, that there's a housing solution, right, that is a similar cost of occupancy, right, where they would own the land, is that a preference that they may have? And that's, that's a, that's a, an idea to follow, to look at, right? Where these cottages are being developed, things like that? I mean, that's a concept, right? It's not, it's, it's something to look at. It's not saying that's kick everybody out. It's, it's provide that people, those security, that they're not all, that their lives are dependent on you deciding you want to, to stay, keep doing this business.
Right.
Right? Because, because you could wake up tomorrow and say, eh, I'm over, I'm selling it, right? And they have no protection.
Hmm, I don't know if I, they don't have any protection, but I mean-
Right, but, but they're sure they have limits, because they don't own the property that their, their house is on, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So like, so that, so that's what that means, right? Is there another model that can provide maybe a similar cost, right? So we're talking about affordable, attainable housing.
Right.
But it gives them more of a security that they actually own the land.
Right. But I mean, I think all of you well know, in today's world, I mean, at $400 a month lot rent, you are not gonna provide-
I, I'm not saying $400. I'm talking about, you know, lot rent, cost of the trailer, or, excuse me, cost of the mobile home, cost of the financing of that, the utilities, all those, again, total cost of occupancy.
Right.
Right? Let's go, let's go all in, apples to apples, like, and, and it's not just the lot rent, correct? Because there's more to it than that.
It can be, yes, absolutely. If they're doing the house, absolutely. And obviously, a lot of them own their own homes, which obviously we have homeowners, which is also, I believe, good for the community versus a lot of renters. We do not have a rental park, which I think is worse on the community. We have homeowners, they make it nicer. So a lot of these people do own their own home, and so all they are paying lot rent. So when you're gonna change that housing concept to something different, okay, then that price goes up for them.
Again, we're not changing any concepts. It, it, the study is to explore options.
I understand. You're, you're gonna show options that have concepts that are gonna be higher than the lot rent, okay?
Maybe so, maybe so, right? And, and again, that's what this study will flush out, right? I, I can't tell you, you know, the gentleman before writes it, well, it's gonna be this, it's gonna be that. I can't tell you that.
I know.
I don't know what it's gonna be. I genuinely, I don't know what it's gonna be.
But we all know what housing costs today to build, okay? We all are not crazy about those.
Again, there are, there are, there are new ways that people look, because of the affordability problem that we have nationwide.
I'm in affordable housing. I know what those costs are. I know.
Right? But people, people are starting to look at new solutions, right? And so this is, like, this is us, it's like, take, hey, this is, let's think outside the box here, and let's look at this differently, and let's look at what, what, what's happening.
And one of those things that he did not mention, that you guys should mention, that all the cities and, and counties and things like that are not mentioning, is manufactured housing.
Absolutely.
That is definitely an affordable thing today, and people are forgetting that. And, and trying to do other things and things like that. But manufactured housing is a huge thing. They've really upgraded what they do in today's world, and, you know, you guys should come take a look and see the new homes that we've brought in and that we will be bringing in, and the differences those will make.
And, and that's part of, and again, that's part of this discussion, right? I mean, we may study this and say, you know, what we have there is the best solution, right? And so let's repeat it, right? Again, I can't, I can't tell you what the study is gonna say, right? That, that's the whole point of the study, because we're gonna have these ULI experts, right, that they, they live and breathe this just like you do.
Right.
And they're gonna look at it from the outside. They don't have any preconceived notions, and they're gonna figure out what, what makes sense there, right? Because we're trying to address those goals, right? And providing housing, affordable and attainable housing, or price points, is one of those goals, right? So that, that's part of it. So, I mean-
I, I understand. I just think it's, I just don't think we should be included. That's just my opinion. I don't think we should be included. I think there's other ways to do it.
But your, but your, your position as the property owner may be different than your residents, right? So they, we need to hear their opinions as well and not just yours. And that's so, unless we include them, we can't know what the opinion is. Because, because, I mean, you may be making great strides and improvements, right? But there may be things that you don't even know that they want to have as part of their community, right? And so like, that's, that's, again, that's part of that neighborhood engagement of including the whole neighborhood, not just, you know, the parcels that, that might change, right? And, and your perspective is important, but their perspective is just as important as yours as well, too.
Oh, absolutely. I, I, I mean, I'm not trying to not protect them. I mean, obviously, that's what I do every day.
I, I, I got one more.
Sure.
You know, if, if I was you, I would really want to be included. And here's the only reason I say that.
Okay.
Okay? I would want to be right in the middle of the planning, the talking, and throwing out my two cents all the time about how I feel about my parcel in this area. And be right there in the, in the, in the know of, of, they're looking at this area, and this area, and this area. And this area here could come up, and I could be thinking, okay, well, what, what could I do with that area if I had that area? What could I do? There's all kinds of different price points of different times of, of, of structures that we've talked about throughout the years.
We, we, we know quite a few of them.
Oh, yeah. You know, and God knows, you know, you may, out of the, out of the blue, come out and say, well, hey, why don't I buy the, the IMI site and this other site and expand mine into a really nice mobile home community of something? Because if you had a really nice mobile home community with, with some really nice amenities, streets, and, and lights, and trees, and so forth, it's a really attractive place to live.
Absolutely.
Okay? It's, it's, what happens is that people just let them go.
Right.
And don't take care of them. The wrong person gets in, and that ruins the whole thing.
Right.
But you want to protect your parcel. And you may want to make more money if it maybe I can figure out how to get, how to get, I could do something.
Right.
Get in there, get involved, and work at it to say, hey, I want to, I want to in the middle of this. I want to know everything you're doing.
Well, I don't mind being in the middle of it. I just don't want my parcel in it.
No, no, I'm, no, but you want your parcel in there.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
No, you, you want your parcel in there so you can be a player in the, in the, in the park. If your parcel's not-
I would be a player in the other park.
If your parcel's not in there, they don't need you in that plan. So I'm saying, you want your parcel in there, so you know what, what they're looking at. So you could try to figure out, wow, how can I do something? How can I do, how can I, all right, well, I want to protect my own over here first. Then the light comes on, well, now, wait a minute, let's go over here. Hey, what if we did this? What if we jumped the street?
And there could be expansion opportunities, and we might be in that. Like I said, I just don't think our parcel should be included. I understand all what you guys are saying. It's part of that thing. But I think we can still be involved without having to be in part of that rectangle.
If I draw you out of the program right now, you're not involved. You're not involved.
And I don't know if that's a bad thing.
And you want to be, you want to be involved.
We, we need to move on, Dick. Is there any further public comment? Yep, sir.
Hi. My name is Donald L. Bowers. I live at 510 Southwest Street. Elm Street Trailer Park is my backyard. I just got a new trailer put in back there. They, they're improving very much. I enjoy having that back there. IMI, yeah, well, they make a lot of noise. They create a lot of dust and stuff. They're wanting to move to a parcel at South Lebanon that they're already working on. The one thing you guys are saying is, you want, you know, like, this rails, the trails and stuff. The building over there with IMI, I just want to mention this, that is part of the old Midland Railroad.
Yep.
That building should be kept and not tore down. The only other spot for the Midland Railroad really is K and M Tool and Dye, their loading dock back there. So anyway, I just want to put that out. I don't want to see that building down. And if anything goes haywire with this trailer park, I don't want to see big, gaudy buildings back behind there blocking my sunlight. So, you know, that's how it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. For the comment?
I was just curious, so if we, I mean, even, including us in this parcel as part of the rectangle, how do we, as residents, become involved in this process so that we are informed? Because, you know, as, as everybody's been mentioning, you know, we, we feel like the trust was already kind of compromised, because nobody was told about it, you know? And I don't, maybe we don't know the avenue of getting involved and finding out this information. So how, how do we figure this stuff out, you know? Can, could we get something in the mailbox when something comes up?
So as part of this process, there would be like a, they probably would host a, probably an event here, right? Because it's, it's fairly close, right? Public space, right? We could have, talk about, and, and hear your guys' feedback of, you know, if you, if you'd rather see all residential or commercial. Or they, they want to hear this engagement from you, right? So there will be notices about that, right? They'll, they'll be on social media. We'll have those discussions. So we will, but we, we, we have to start this process to start the conversation, right? So like, that's, so, I mean, I understand, like, how you guys are maybe perceiving this, is like, we should have been notified that you were even talking about this? That, that's, that's, I mean, we, we do the public agendas. We do all those postings. That, that's, that's us notice, notifying the community about that, right?
Where was that posted, outside of Chuck Hunt?
Online, and also down here in the building as well.
So, so, but where online? Because I, I just don't know.
On our city website. We post, we post all the agendas. We post all the, the documents and related. So like, that's just, that's what we have to do as a, as a city, by law, have to post those things, right? So, that's the initial notice, right? And then now we are gonna start the conversation, and those will become more direct notices, just like, hey, we are directly talking about area around you. Like, just like, go through a planning process. There's rules of like, if you're within 150 feet, you literally get a certified letter in the mail that you have to physically accept, right? So, again, that, that's part of this engagement process. We have to do this tonight to start the whole conversation.
So, so you're saying that we have to be involved, essentially?
No, you don't know. You can be, you can choose to be involved or not, right?
Like, we're going to know when to be involved.
But you will get, you will be proactively being reached out to, by mail, to say, hey, we're having a public meeting this night, right? Or we're doing a survey, you know, follow the link, give, give us, give us your feedback. I mean, there'll be avenues to, to, to make your voice heard on the various issues.
I, I think you guys have convinced me that I actually appreciate the idea of a survey. I do want to be included. I think that, you know, maybe we could, maybe we could improve where the older buildings are. But I think that I'm speaking on behalf of 80, 80 residents that, and you guys have said before that you're not interested in taking people's homes. You know, and I made a comment to you and said that I'd hold you to that, and I, I truly hope that we are not taking people's homes.
We, we, we are trying to make your neighborhood a better place, right? And, and you guys may think it's perfect and great now, right? But we're trying to make it even more perfect and even better. Like, that's, that's what we're trying to do.
I, I appreciate the park that we live in, you know? Tammy does a great job. She, she helped me get into my home and did a fantastic job getting me into my home. Helped my mom get into a home. And my mom was in a, kind of a financial bind. So I would say, you know, out of all the landlords, if you'd call her that, out of all the landlords that I've ever worked with, Tammy is a substantial landlord, and I-
And that's good to hear.
I, I'd hate to see that she wasn't included in this, so hopefully we can learn something. It's, it sounds like we're probably moving forward with the survey.
Well, we have to approve it tonight. We don't, we haven't voted on it yet, so. If you guys want to have a conversation, then, then we need to vote for, and then they would need to vote in favor of it.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Ashley. I live in Elm Park. And I would like to say something, because if you really take a look at Lebanon, like, I grew up here. And it's, it's, I mean, it's a big community, and we've always been a tight community. But if you drive down from Walgreens and all that, what do you, what do you see? You see a park. You come on our side, what do we get? Like, we get nothing. And we all have kids. And I, you guys are wanting to build everything. Do something for these kids.
That's, that's what this is to do.
But that's what I'm saying, I know. That's why I'm just throwing my two cents, and I'm just letting you know, like, I, I'd like to see a park.
We're, we're trying. That, that, we want to have the conversation. We want to hear that feedback from you. Like, that's, that's what this study is about, right? That's what this is, we're, we're trying to make the neighborhood better. That's the goal of this.
And I mean, I was, like, why don't we come for a community? I mean, we always see these Habitat people. They all come together. Why aren't we getting it? Is there an option that we're able to get help? I mean, I know that our trailer park needs cleaned up, and I have no problem in maintaining that. But it's not, it's only a few. It's not something that we can't get through. I mean, we live with a lot of old people. I'm willing to step up to help, because we're a community. We have to stick together. Like, we have two trailer parks left. These are our homes.
And those are the things that we hope to flush out through this, right? And if, and maybe there's that, and that's, that's the goal, right? That's the whole point of what we're trying to do here. We want, we want to hear that from you.
And as far as the whole Facebook, like, a lot of stuff would have been cleared up if you would have just simply said, like, something. But I mean, this is new to me. Like, I'm 35, and this is my first home. I just bought my home off last year. I'm the one that just bought it. Like, it took me a long time, and I'm 35. But I never bounced with my kids. I've kept this place because of Tammy. She's an amazing person. And I'm just saying, it's like, when you said it's just affordable housing, what's affordable to you? Because this is affordable to us. And when you said affordable, I took offense to it, because if my trailer is my home, me and my kids have memories. That we all have memories. And I'm just saying, and when you just, you could have, very simply, I know it was on a Sunday, and I'm sorry to bother you, but it was posted on a Sunday. And when I, Tammy just asked, what's the plan? And you, you said, read the highlight. Like, I understand it? Like, I don't understand that. Like I said, this is new to me. This is new to all of us. Like that guy said, he was there for 39 years. This is new. I mean, you guys do this daily. I mean, I see everything coming down.
You have the microphone that can't hear you.
Sorry, I see everything coming down, like Daryl Terrence. Like, I'd say, I know you guys said that you didn't do it like the, the company did.
We didn't. It was a private owner and a, and a private buyer. The city had no role in any of it.
And I'm, like, Eli Lilly's coming in and everything. Like, I'm glad that there's change, and I mean, I'm, I'm glad that Lebanon's doing a change. But you're going for someone that, this is what we can afford. You guys don't have Section 8 for us single moms. You guys don't have hut housing, and when you, they do have senior citizens, we have to be on a waiting list. You know how long that waiting list is? It could take three years. Not to mention daycare. Like, you guys aren't getting the big point. It's 2024. Stuff's getting rough. You guys have it easy. You guys go home and go to bed. Because you guys make more than what I make. And I mean, this is our home. And someone's got to speak on it. And I know you guys are probably like, oh, well, it's not a big deal. It's a big deal to us. That's why we all showed up.
We're trying to help.
Well, we know that now, but like I said, it could have simply took you to say on the ta, on the, on Facebook, when I had commented, all you had to say was, we're trying to better it. Instead, but you just said affordable housing, so that's me. You're, I'm thinking like, what's affordable housing? Because our affordable is two different things.
I, there was a lot of people going back and forth. I, I'm sorry, I didn't respond directly to you, but I, I said from the very beginning that this was trying to make, there's a part of town, right, that needed some love, and we're trying to, we're trying to give that part of town love. That's what we're trying to do. That's what the whole point of this study is.
And give us a chance to make some love, then.
That's what, that's, that's, that's what this goal is.
I'm just saying, just please take us off of it. Like, we don't deserve it. And that's all I have to say, but I hope you all can sleep tonight.
Thank you for comments.
No, thank you. Thanks for having us.
For the comment?
Come on, Chuck. And most of you all know me. I'm Chuck Hunt. I'm the one that posted it. I did not, I repeat, did not put that on there to fear, scare, or get anybody with pitchforks and torches to come down here to the city building. The reason I posted that was because someone contacted me that lives not in the trailer park, or in the mobile home park, excuse me, but lives a block away, and wanted to know if I knew anything about this, because he said his exact words, you always attend the city meetings. Well, mostly I have. I have not in a while. I've been attending city meetings probably 30, 35 years. But I'm a true believer that people need to be informed. Now, granted, the mayor has stated and the, and the council, that this is not about running anybody out, and all the- In all the years I've been here, I will stand up for the city of Lebanon. They have never run anybody out of their house. Now, there's been some properties that have been demolished that probably should have been demolished twenty years ago because they were a health and safety hazard. But I don't, you know, I think where they're going with this and what we need to do is we need to move forward. And I, I would suggest to the council and Kevin, I don't know who's in charge of this, Matt. I mean, if they need to contact somebody, who, who do they contact?
Uh, it'll probably be Ben Bontrager.
Okay, Ben, which is, Ben is on vacation. I get that. Ben's a good person. He'll sit down and talk to you one-on-one. I've, I've talked to Ben many times. A few times we bumped heads. We didn't quite see I D I, but, but he's a fair person. I would suggest that the council sit down with the trailer owner. But by the way, then people have done a fantastic job. I remember it twenty-some years ago. It was not a good place to be. So kudos to them. But I would suggest they sit down and come up with some kind of a committee where that they can voice their opinions. I understand the survey. I understand the, the gist of, uh, what the city is wanting to do. And I do give them credit for that because, you know, the I M I, uh, the bill, the ground behind that, which used to be Hendrick's, I think. Uh, I did, by the way, I did talk to Ron Hoosier today, the owns Master Built Construction. Me and Ron's friends, been friends for a long time. He didn't know anything about it. He said, just tell them, bring a check. It's all for sale. And that's just Ron. But anyway, I, guys, like I said, there was no intent to put any kind of fear. I, I have been an advocate all the time that I've attended city meetings. People call me and say, well, what about this? You know what I'd tell them? Just like I did with all the people and the chickens, attend the meeting, speak your mind, tell them what you're thinking. They can't, you can't sit at home and watch this and convey your feelings, your thoughts. So attend meetings. That's what it's all about. And I will give Matt credit. He has opened up the floor where you can talk. I've been to meetings where I was told, no, you cannot talk. Not here, but other meetings. So take advantage of it. It's your right. You're taxpayers. Whether you're paying lot rent or you're paying property tax, you are taxpayers. Because what you paying lot rent goes to that lady right there and she is a taxpayer in the city of Lebanon. Well, right, yeah, I forgot about that. I did, and I did actually know that. But, you know, has anybody got any questions for me? I mean, I'm the one that posted. I take full responsibility for any of my actions. Mike, you've known me for years.
Well, I think you redeemed yourself now.
No, I'm just saying, I did not, I did not sit there and say, okay, guys, come on, let's have an insurrection. Let's go to the city building. Absolutely not. But anybody got any questions for me?
No, just to comment that, that if the owner, if she doesn't want to change a thing about the mobile home park, it can stay there just like it is for the rest of my day.
Exactly. And I think you guys got a good answer from the owner. She says she's not intending to sell, you know, so I think that's a great thing. But, you know, hopefully we can all come through this together. That part of town will get like Matt said, like Matt says, the Levitt needs, because, and there's some other areas of town that could use some attention. But you know, the one thing I have noticed about not only the city of Lebanon in general is with the housing shortage, it has caused a lot of houses to be redeemed, rebuilt, rehabilitated, and in a lot better shape than what they were ten years ago. There you go. Any questions? I'm a free target. Do what you want. Or you can meet me in the parking lot behind the school. I just, I just wanted to clear the air. If anybody thought that I was here to scare you, intimidate you, or cause fear, that's not me.
Thank you, Chuck.
Okay.
For the comment? Good? All thoughts from council?
Oh, Kevin. The table in the corner out in the hall has several sign-up sheets. If people want to give us their contact information, we'll be happy to communicate with them even more directly than the mail.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to ask a question. Like what is, like, what are you guys hoping at? Like what's wrong with the trailer park? Like what, you guys say you guys are trying to make it better. What are you guys trying to make it better?
Right. We, we want to hear from you, right? Do you want better, do you want more streetlights there, right? Do you, do you want to, do you want to, do you want to park nearby, right? Sure, of course.
We need potholes there.
We need, we need the potholes. And I would like some speed bumps because there are kids that come, like you should see people fly down that road.
Okay, traffic calming, okay.
And there's no stop sign. Like the stop signs, like if you go down our road, well, I live right on, on like Jamison. And there's no stop signs. Like as you're coming up to like, going like this way, like there's no stop signs. There's like two big potholes. And I just, I feel like we need speed bumps. Like we do have kids.
So, so the, so the goal of, of this survey, it will, it will flush those things out, right? And, and that's where, and that's where when we talk about engaging you guys and, and, and hearing what you guys care about, that's, that's the whole point of this, right?
And then I would like some drainage, like, like right wherever our roads start, like up on the sides, like we, it floods. We can't get a little bit of rain and like our, it's flooded. And like I said, I'm all about you guys changing it. Like I, I see change. But I mean, I just, I guess the post scared me by hearing what I had to hear. When you said affordable, that's what freaked me out because I'm like, this is all I can afford.
Right.
And I, I've been stable. Like I kept my kids a roof over their head for ten years. And let me tell you, it was not easy. But I did it. And I'm, I finally had my home paid off. And then like a year later, like I hear about this, like I got upset about it. I'm not gonna lie, I cried. Because like this is my home. This is my kids' home. And I mean, I worked hard for it. We all work hard for what we do. And I'm just, like I said, I'm, I'm here for change, but I just want to know like what, what would you like to see in Elm Park? Like what, what would you like to change about it?
We, we want to see what you guys want to see. We, if you, if we want, if you have ideas for improvement, that's what we want to lay in that plan and have that reflective in that document. Like that's the whole, like, as we start the public engagement process, like that's, that's, we want to hear directly from you, right? You said the park earlier, right? That's a value to you, right? Someone will say, hey, I want to have a grocery store I can walk to, right? Or hey, you know, I wish I had a, a barber over, that's closer on this side of town I could, I could walk to easily. Like those are all things that's, that's feedback that we can kind of compile, put that together, understand what, because there, there are going to be similar threads throughout that, right?
Yeah.
Of, of what people want to see, right? And then that's what will inform the whole concept. Like so that, that, we, we, we want to make it what you guys envisioned the best version of it is. That's what we want to make it into.
I understand. But I'm here to help you guys.
And, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm very sorry you felt scared and I really am sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I was.
And, and, and I, and I'm sorry you felt that way. And again, I've, I've said it before, like Chuck and I have gone back and forth, right? And then we'll, we'll leave it there, but like, the goal of us, we are trying to, we are trying to help. We are trying to make this an even better place for you to live. Because we believe, I, I believe firmly, Lebanon needs to be a community for people of all walks of life. And it needs to stay that way. It can't, I don't want it to be a place like Carmel or Noblesville or Westfield where it's, it's the haves and the have-nots, right? We want people of, of everything. We want to be a diverse community, all walks of life. And that, and we need to have price points of housing at all price points. And I, and I've always said that. And so we need to think a little differently, right? If just building more traditional, single-family homes all the time, right? Or building more and more apartments all the time, that's not the solution. It has to be an all-the-above approach. And so again, that's where the cottages, the narrow lots, all these different, you know, the, the manufactured homes. Those are all the different pieces that we can kind of put together to be a better community as a whole. Because we want to be that community for everyone.
And I totally respect that. I mean, I'm, I'm all up for it. Like I said, I'd like, I'd love to see change. But it's just, that's where it was at was when, I mean, when I read that, I took it the wrong way.
And it gets, that's how social media is, right? It gets misconstrued and misunderstood and absolutely, I understand.
So I'm sorry I was hateful. If I was hateful, I wasn't trying to be hateful. I'll see you at the next meeting.
No, I'm just glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. Part of the process. Exactly. It's great.
Like I said, I think the spirit of the residence is in that second bullet, it says for the residents to move to a better option.
It does think that.
It does.
And, and. And, and again, that's, that's because at the end of the day, right? As we talked about, they don't own the land, right? And so if there's a structure that allows them to offer a comparable type overall cost of occupancy, where they actually own the land, that's more security for them. Might hurt your business a little bit, right? And trade-offs, right? But like, but that's where, that's something we're trying to work on. All right, I think we've.
Oh, sorry, this will be my last question.
Yep.
Are you guys voting tonight? Like is there like, are you guys taking votes?
We will be voting on funding to start the, the plan tonight, yes.
Okay, and will we, like, will it be on the media where we're contacted?
The, once, once we, if, if the council votes yes to, to, to fund this, well, well, we have a contract with U L, U L I and then they will start the process, which will include community engagement. So you will start to get updates and being reached out to as this process begins.
I believe I said it was supposed to.
Yeah, and then there's a sign-up out there as well too, so. Final closing thoughts, discussion of council?
I would just remind people, if you want to be engaged, sign up with the email. Contact information for Kevin and their organization can get with you and keep you online what's going on.
Kevin, anything to say to close?
No, I don't think so. I think there's been a lot of good discussion, a lot of perhaps misunderstandings. We're, we're hopefully, we shed light on that. So again, really, as, as you've said it enough, uh, we, we want all of Lebanon to be the best it can be. And that's what this is about. And, and this is just, this is not even step one. This is just saying we're doing the process. So, uh, sign up out in the hallway if you want to. If you don't, feel free. Uh, but look for other, uh, other opportunities to get notification about this, whether through social media or, or U S mail. And, uh, we'll, uh, we'll look forward to the process.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the funding of fifteen thousand dollars for the Urban Plan Institute Technical Assistance Panel Program.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Second from John. I'll very sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Post? As approved. Again, we'll keep you guys updated as this begins to move forward and you'll be contacted. All right? All right, uh, next item up will be a utility reservation M O U concerning the Farmers Bank Fieldhouse area. We have Ed and Jeff, or Ed Baskel and Jeff Jacob from the utilities to talk about this.
Yes, good evening.
Give him a second, Ed.
Oh, sure.
All right, go ahead. You got it.
Thank you. Yeah, well, thanks for having us. Uh, I just kind of want to give the Cliff Notes version and then I'm going to bring Jeff up to talk about the details of the legal document and Ryan to go over the details on the water. But the short and long of it is, one thing I want to emphasize is we're about half capacity in our plant, in our water plant. We're not running out of water, uh, but we are, uh, have allocated very close to the, the point where we can't allocate anymore for new development. What today's agreement is about is reserving capacity for the area that is of interest to planning and zoning and the city council around Hickory Junction. And that's the main thing we're going for today. And we've been in close communication with the, with the mayor's office and the planning department, just trying to make sure that we, uh, we do the right thing for the city of Lebanon, just like you guys have done earlier in this meeting and every other issue. So with that, let me, uh, call up Jeff and let him go into the details of the agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, this is, the request before you this evening is very similar to one, uh, that you had seen in two thousand twenty-two. Um, at that time, there was an M O U presented to the utility board and the city council that pre-allocated approximately fifty percent of the available water capacity for the city of Lebanon, uh, as well as wastewater capacity. And that M O U has been amended in front of you a few times and then a final agreement was approved. But that helps secure, um, Eli Lilly as the first user in the LEAP district. We have a similar concept tonight, only with Hickory Junction, um, a project that's already underway, as, as you are all aware. Um, and the reason that we're bringing this for you tonight is that the, um, this utility has been asked in the interest of the city's financial health and the importance of this development as a keystone project in the area to pre-allocate water and wastewater E D Us to make sure that Hickory Junction has enough capacity to move into its next phase. Now, as Ed mentioned, this is not a situation that I want, I want to be very clear that the city's not running out of water. What it is running out of is, you know, it's got plenty of water for all of its current users. But what we are running thin on is allocatable capacity. So as a developer comes in, they claim and pay for, after they've gone through the planning process, certain amounts, gallons of water and wastewater as part of their, as part of their process. Now, just to remind you, I know that this is not a world you guys walk in every day, um, but a few, a few items. First, E D U is equivalent dwelling unit and that's a, a unit of measure. It's a volume or flow characteristic for one single-family home. So you could have a restaurant that has five E D Us of water, wastewater capacity, or an industrial user that has several hundred or even thousands of E D Us. So that's one concept as part of this agreement that you need to understand. Uh, the second is, when we talk about capacity, water capacity, what we're talking about is the total available water capacity in the system or wastewater. But we'll, we'll stick to water throughout these definitions and examples. And then the last, which is what we're really dealing with tonight, is allocated water. And what we mean when we say allocated water is that's purchased capacity in the water system. That means that you've had a project that's gone through Lebanon Planning Department review. The Plan Commission has reviewed it or potentially B Z A and/or B Z A. It's gone back through staff. Lebanon Utilities has reviewed it and it's cleared to purchase through availability fees allocated or allocatable capacity, meaning it's theirs. Okay, you have to go through a process to do that. What this agreement tonight is doing is, uh, asking the city council to advance that process for the developer. Meaning we want them to be able to allocate because of the importance of this project. We want them to be able to purchase that allocated capacity. We want to assign it to this spot. And what that does is it locks in the capacity needs for the next phase of the Hickory Junction project. Um, and that is, not only is that locking that in for the developer, it's protecting the city's interests in seeing move that project forward on a more timely basis. Now, um, I, I'd like to have Ryan talk to you a little bit about sort of the how and the why of why we're in the, in the, um, making this request tonight and talk a little bit about capacity and what we've seen happen in the last several months. Ryan?
Good evening. I, uh, thought everybody was here because they heard I was going to be speaking, apparently not. Uh, but I will, uh, fight through, fight through my disappointment to, uh, just give kind of a quick history of how we got into the situation we are. Uh, we had a little bit of a, kind of a perfect storm of, of some issues, uh, along the planning way. Um, as many of you know, we've been studying, um, adding additional water, uh, to our community for a number of years. I've been in my role, uh, just, uh, as over water, wastewater for, um, almost four years now, maybe five. And well before that, this discussion was a pretty hot topic and much needed. Um, and, and the fall of twenty, or of, yeah, of twenty twenty-two, we allocated a little over seventeen hundred E D Us to Eli Lilly. Um, and at the same time, um, I E D C and C E G, Citizens Energy Group were, uh, in dis, in discussion of bringing, uh, a short-term water source to Lebanon. And the timing of that, um, based on the schedule we were given, um, the water would, was scheduled to be here before Lilly, uh, was to come online. So that, the capacity, uh, that, that we, we need for future allocations would be, would be taken care of with that. Um, unfortunately, that, um, for whatever reason, that deal with C E G and I E D C did not transpire. Um, so that, that moved the time clock on, um, the short-term water source, um, down the way. And then on top of that, um, Lilly, uh, moved up their timeline of when they are going to be um, at near capacity on their water, their daily average, a little over eight hundred thousand gallons a day. Um, so as the goalposts are moving to purchase short-term water, the Eli Lilly coming online is going the opposite way, um, in that, in that scenario. Now, we are, um, actively working with, um, I, um, Indian American Water, uh, to provide the, a short-term, um, solution to this. Um, and the, I, I believe a deal is pretty close. And when I say pretty close, I, I, I would assume right around the corner. Um, I don't know, we don't have an exact time, but, uh, there is a forty-month window. I don't know any, we don't have an exact time, but there is a 40-month window of, once that deal is signed, kind of, they, they've given a 40-month window of before we realize additional water source that will come to us. So we have a gap. And ju, just on that deal, so the, our, our system has about 15,753 EDUs for our entire system. This, the potential for this deal would be an additional 30,000 EDUs to put, kind of put it, put it in perspective. And then a potential deal from the north could bring 160,000 EDUs. But I, I do want to clarify that the, the short-term Indian American Water from the east is its own separate project. It, it is specifically to come to Lebanon to help with the water allocated for Eli Lilly. And then there's a great potential and a great opportunity to capture even more water for, for Lebanon Utilities and for the city of Lebanon, which is, which is a great deal. Completely different than the, the LEAP development and the, anything that would come from the north. So I, I, sometimes those can get a little bit muddled and I just want to make sure that everybody knows those are two different, we have a short-term and a longer-term situation there. So where we are on that is the, we are close to the end of our allocated capacity, to where we are going to have to start making some decisions on who gets put in the queue and who we can allocate water to. And this project and this MOU identifies the importance of the Hickory Junction project for the city of Lebanon and for Lebanon Utilities. And so this will secure 95 EDUs for them to continue development until a, a water source i, is brought to town and then, obviously, they will continue after that. So I can answer any, I, I kind of went through that pretty fast. I, I don't want to have to say good morning to anybody. So I wanted to make sure that I tried to cover everything, but not too fast. So if there's any questions on kind of the history or where we are right now, I'd be more than happy to answer.
95 EDUs will take care of Hickory Junction's future needs?
The, the development around it, yes.
Like three hotels?
The restaurants.
Whatever restaurants or whatever apartments or whatever houses?
So in our current allocated capacity, this, this 95 nonwithstanding, the Fieldhouse and Belcanto development have already been, are already part of that. So this will be in addition to the Fieldhouse and Belcanto. So yes, restaurants, hotels, things that will be needed with the Fieldhouse being up and operating, those can take priority and those can continue and they can phase it, you know, accordingly. But this, this will ensure that this project continues to move forward.
I just want to give a little bit of background on, on why I even asked to, to bring this forward with utilities. Obviously, the way we structured the Fieldhouse, right, where it's captured, where it's self-supporting with its own TIF, right, to, the development is paying for itself, right? And so with the, call it strain on our water supply from the Lilly moving forward, the citizens agreement being pushed back, we're kind of in this pinch point. And I didn't want, I don't want the city in a position where we are counting on development around the Fieldhouse to occur to pay back the financing of the Fieldhouse, but they don't have water, so then it can't get built, right? And then so therefore, no development happens and then therefore the Fieldhouse is standing by itself with no, generating another income to, to fund itself, right? So that's why I thought it was prudent that we need to say, hey, let's, we, you know, we have a, we have an overall vision for this site, right? It's, it's planned, we kind of know the overall plan for it, but they're not, they're behind other projects that are trying to work through our planning process. And so because they don't know it's going to be this exact user, they haven't been able to enter the, the process yet. But I think once, but if, if we know, hey, we can carve off this amount to support this region of the city, we therefore then can give some security and we can, we're not trying to rush things and we're, we're doing it, make sure the way, the way it's supposed to be done. And also because we're, we're not putting the greater city at risk, financial risk, because the development is, you know, we have a situation where there's, they're ready to build, but then there's no water left, right? That would be the worst-case scenario for the city. That's what caused the, the triggering of the income taxes on the residents, which again, we don't want to, we want to avoid that, right? So we need the development around it to make sure it protects the taxpayers. So that's why I, I thought it'd be important for us to bring this forward. Still a work in progress, certainly, and Jeff can touch on that, but I just wanted to explain why I, I wanted to have the discussion about this tonight, so.
And we've been meeting, it, it is, it feels like it may be quick to come here, but behind the scenes, planning is over, the mayor, Lebanon Utilities have been meeting and, and really making sure that the, we can prioritize what, what we need to prioritize. So this has been a great process behind the scenes to kind of get where we, where we are and it takes, there's a lot of moving parts. And so it, behind the scenes, it's gone really smoothly and, and this is, we're in a really good spot. And so everybody's in support of, of this MOU for sure, on the Lebanon Utility side.
So this, this would cut out the Hinky project?
So it, it, nothing would be cut out.
I mean, as far as them having water today?
So where they would be in the process, they would, they would be behind, they haven't started their process as far as, so it would just, it would just be a timing issue. Once we get the agreement signed and we have that 40-month timeframe, then it would just be where they are timing it up with that to where the future water comes. But then also with allocation, the way allocation goes, we, it, once a deal is secured to start the construction with water coming here, with the timing issue, as long as the water is scheduled to be here before a project develops, we can allo, we can continue to allocate. But without knowing if that, we've got 100% guarantee, or we have a signed contract or construction hasn't started, we, at the end of Department of Environmental Management will not let us allocate, obviously, more than what we can produce. And we don't want to do that anyway. We want to make sure that what we produce is sufficient for current ratepayers and the, and everyone who's been allocated.
95 EDU for Hickory Junction still leaves us a little bit of wiggle room, having some, just a little bit of assy.
Well, there.
So, please hold. To answer your question a little bit more directly with a, with a roundabout answer, it is our hope that once we have the, have an agreement inked with IEDC and Indian American Water, that we are then able to tap into some reserves using good engineering calculation and a, and a view of actually what's going on at the water treatment facilities and calculating. We have very conservative calculations in play right now that, that Ed and the water department have not touched until we have a little better picture of what's going to be happening. That's why the Citizens Energy Group deal, when it was pulled from the IURC, stung, because that was a, that was, once we were able to tap into that, that agreement, we would have been able to move, be a little bit more aggressive in our calculations. And, and ta, and we're not going to know what those are until we have a better understanding of what the IEDC, Indiana American Water deal is and then sort of evaluating what's happening at both the facilities.
So the water from the east is imminent, right?
A, a deal.
The, the.
Agreement. But, but then it, the challenge with it though is it's a 40-month deliverable. So if they ink the deal, you know, it's three and a half years out.
And, and our hope is to continue to look at other options, which Ryan and his team are looking at. We just don't have any of those to present to you tonight because the rug got pulled out from us a little bit on timing of two pretty big issues. So in any event, our, our request for you tonight is to approve the memorandum of understanding. We know we're out of order a little bit. Typically, we come to you with a utility board approval in hand. Given some of the timings, we weren't able to advertise that and felt as though this was ripe to put on the city council agenda. Apologies for some of the late edits. There was another perfect storm of attorneys traveling and trying to work through some of these issues as recently as this afternoon. We do see this as an ongoing continued partnership with Card and Associates and their sub-entity. And we look forward as a utility to continuing to work with them. We would ask for your approval of the memorandum of understanding, reserving the 95 EDUs of water and the 154 EDUs of wastewater as outlined in the agreement, contingent upon the utility board's approval tomorrow at their special meeting. We would suggest to you that in the interim, that the city council go ahead and lock down those capacities until the city, or until the utility board has considered and finalized the agreement tomorrow. Happy to answer any questions, but that would be our request of the city council this evening.
I will say there are still some final tweaks on this, right? So they're, so make it pending final, full review, essentially. It, it won't materially change, but it will, there may be some, some tweaks with that, so.
Yeah, and, and to address that more specifically, we may come back and, and look at, as we did with Lilly, and I know that you were probably tired of dealing with that agreement, but we made some accommodations to match specifically what was going on. And in our discussions with Card and Associates, we would likely do that again and look at specifically in terms of timings of payments and the like to match what the development process is on their end.
And I would just make a, a point too. I, I don't envision this as something that we will do again. Again, I think this is just a unique scenario with where, again, the city is involved financially in, in the project and so therefore we need to make sure we have the protection for our citizens. So this is not something that, I mean, Lilly made sense because it was such a huge amount of water requested. And then I think in this case, it's, it makes sense just from the cities, we have a financial investment in this facility, so therefore we need to protect ourselves and our, our citizens and taxpayers. And that's kind of why, again, we're bringing this forward, so.
I really agree. We've already run that Hickory Junction bell.
Fair, we have any.
We've hosted our first tournament there actually this weekend, so.
You have any idea when the state of Indiana is going to fulfill what they said they would do to us?
Of bringing the water?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what that agreement with the Indian American, that's what the.
Yeah, that's the, that's the agreement with Indian American Water. We're, again, we, in the fall, we were very close. Everybody thought we had a deal with citizens and things sort of fell apart. We, frankly, we expected a signed deal with Indian American Water and IEDC around the holidays, first of the year. I think we're going to get a report. I think, Mayor, we have our, our status meeting next week and I'm expecting at any, any time now with one of these meetings that we're going to be off and running again with some signed agreements in hand, so.
Which, which helps us because our, our challenge now, right, is we just don't have, we don't know the, the time, the time table, right? So as soon as they sign that agreement, it's 40 months.
Or better.
Or better, right? At worst, at, at, yeah, at worst 40 months, right?
The other question is, why does it just keeps strapping out? I mean.
Because it's different, it's different utility providers, right? I mean, again, we got to that, they got, I mean, I'd say we got to the two-yard line with citizens and it just, I mean.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think Mr. Campbell, to answer your question with, with IEDC, I think this is a unique, largest project in the state's history, economic development project. And there's not a real clear roadmap on how to tackle some of these issues. And I would begrudgingly say there are a lot of attorneys involved, which sometimes, sometimes slows the process down, but.
That's probably half the problem, I don't know.
Yeah, I thought I stole your thunder there. I didn't, so, no, I, I think, I, I, there, there's just a lot, a lot of moving parts and, and, and a lot of people involved and interests and it is, we're, we're beginning, we've gotten a little edgy ourselves with that and we're, we're pushing as hard as we can.
I will say though, part of the agreement too, when that first Indian American Water is connected to our system, the first, I mean, we get 1.35 MGD essentially back immediately from that, right? And so, and then therefore then we can then also have a meter system going forward that we can then have more water go through our, our pipes as well.
Those previous MOUs that were amended and came into a final agreement, that was a, a, a pretty savvy move by Ed and the utility board to lock down that capacity and at a, at a very, very favorable cost, so.
Any further questions on the MOU?
No, sir.
Okay, would entertain a motion to approve pending final legal review and authorize?
Authorize the mayor to work with Lebanon Utilities to finalize.
Okay, to finalize and, and also contingent upon utility board approval as well?
And directing the utility to reserve this capacity pending finalization of that agreement.
Everything Jeff said.
We'll make that motion, whatever it is.
So moved, all right. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mike, Alferci.
Aye.
Supposed, as approved. Thank you, council, I appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
You'll watch the video for that one, George.
Not yet, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure you got it, we're good. Okay. All right, that concludes what I have for new business. Dare I ask if there's anything from council? No, all good. Motion to pay the claims, is there a second? Second from Sierra, Alferci.
Aye.
Supposed. Any announcements or discussion?
Just a reminder that the, to the city council members, we have a working session Thursday night, six o'clock.
Good announcement? Okay. We have a motion from, adjourned from Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Dick, Alferci.
Aye.
Supposed. All right, our next city council meeting will be February 26th at 15:00 PM. We are adjourned.